From his, that company to go and have lunch with them.
Wow, be nice to the intern.
I, I can't go.
Oh.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the June 18th, 2018 Board of Selectmen's meeting. On the agenda this evening, we have public service announcements. 6:35, we have a public hearing. Right of first refusal to purchase two house lots at 236 Potunk. Then we have department heads, the Department of Public Works, Tyon-Bon Water Supply Alternatives Agreement, acceptance of proposal from Tyon-Bon Geotechnical Services, Water and Sewer Department, Recreation Department, and discussion on recreation fields on the Shepherd Parcell. We have a discussion from the tree warden, Tom Chamberlain, about gypsy moths. Town administrators update, including a letter of support for the open space and recreation plan, authorization for emergency repairs to 8 Brookfield Road, vote to fund five hours for the conservation department, accept a few resignations, approval of police chief's fiscal year 19 contract, acceptance of easements for Countryside Home Builders Incorporated, 12 Acorn Lane, participation in Sturbridge Farmers Market request, annual appointments, reappointments, vote on an IOD claim. Police Department vote to authorize town administrator to carry over vacation hours. Old business, new business, correspondence, approval of minutes. Okay, public service announcements, Priscilla?
No.
Chase, now that you just ran in.
Yeah, no, none, thank you.
Uh, no.
Sure.
Well, uh, there's, I didn't bring the information with me, but there's, uh, there's gonna be music and muskets on the town common coming up.
Oh, on the 23rd, is it?
23rd, I believe, and it's, it's, there's gonna be some activities at 4 o'clock, and then the, uh, militia will be on the common at 6 o'clock.
Yeah, used to be a day in April, in June. Mary?
Uh, just that the, we're still looking for runners, um, running, volunteers and sponsors for the half marathon that Sturbridge is hosting September 9th. It's called the Rick Hoyt Sturbridge Half Marathon, trying to bring special events to Sturbridge and also honor a local hero in the running world. So, September 9th, if you Google Rick Hoyt Sturbridge Half Marathon or go on to our website, there's an opportunity to sign up. We're looking for people to hand out water, set up the race, a variety of, of things.
Okay, and then we do have the announcement, the signs are around town and it's on the website, about the water being, and is in effect. Rebecca, please let the minutes show that we're being taped by the telegram and gazette. Okay, the water being runs from May 1st through September 30th, depending on the rate of flow, which triggers the conditions. Nonessential outside water use is not allowed, except that sprinklers may be used for lawn watering outside of the hours of 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM one day a week. And if you go on the town's website, there's even more details. Okay, it is 6:35, we do have a public hearing, Mary?
Sorry.
Well, that's okay.
In accordance with the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 61A, Section 14, the Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on Monday, June 18th, 2018, at 6:35 PM in the Veterans Memorial Hall at the Sturbridge Town Hall, 308 Main Street, Sturbridge, regarding the proposal to exercise the town's right of first refusal to purchase two house lots at 236 Potunk Road, totaling approximately 166.76 acres, Sturbridge, Mass, described in a deed recorded with the Worcester District Registry of Deeds, Plan Book 933, Plan 103, and identified by the assessors as parcel 520-00343-236, together referred to as the property. The property is owned by Kenneth P. Kazwowski, Kazowski.
There's only two.
I really?
Yes. Correct.
Okay, the owner. Did I read it correctly?
No, go ahead.
The Board of Selectmen will consider whether the town will exercise the town's right of first refusal pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 61A, Section 14, to purchase the property and appropriate the funds necessary to acquire the property. The notice of intent to sell and accompanying documents submitted to the town by the owner may be reviewed in the town clerk's office located in the Sturbridge Town Hall during the hours of 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM on Mondays, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM Tuesdays through Fridays, accepting holidays. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the matter may appear at the public hearing at the time and place designated above, and it's signed Selectman Mary Blanchard, Chairman.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from the board? It is a public hearing, any comments or questions from the audience?
I just did have actually one.
Okay, Mary?
Uh, it was recommended to, to decline the right of first refusal, right, by the planning board? Was, was that a unanimous, if you know?
Um, well, I don't know, but I know somebody, yes, it was voted 5 to 0 to waive their right of first refusal.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on closing the hearing? All in favor? Okay, is there a motion then to either?
I move to waive the right of first refusal for the two building lots as part of, located as part of 236 Potunk Road. I'd prefer to identify them as the two building lots, because parcels is a little bit more vague.
That's fine. Is there a second on that?
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Chairman, I have for you two copies of the waiver of right of first refusal in the event that the board were to vote such, and I would ask for the board to sign said document. Sir, do you want this, your copy of the document now?
Yes.
All right.
This doesn't work.
What, your pen?
Yeah. Hey, use this. No, I'm gonna go get another one. Oh, thank you, I have one. Can I, is, is it vertical? Oh, that's good.
Oh, you got a good one.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have department head reports, Department of Public Works, Greg?
There's been another tornado, uh, reissue.
How's everybody doing?
Good, and you?
Good. Uh, essentially, April and May, April, uh, we still had storm work to do, but we did some stump grinding and cleanup. We did a lot of, started a lot of plow repair, or started some plow repair. We had, uh, did a lot of maintenance work, some kind of road maintenance grading. Did a job at the dam, Big Island Dam, a chain link fence fell down. Essentially, the galvanized post had thinned out because of, water somehow got in them and was freezing and thawing and rusted down. And so we had to jackhammer, uh, a few of them broke off, but we had to jackhammer the rest of them out and set new ones up and then reinstall the fence, so. But that had to be around 93, I think it was put in, so it, you know, lasted a pretty good amount of time, the original fence. And then we started laying out work for the trail parking lot, and then ultimately in, uh, May, we did a lot of work on the parking lot, finished it. May was, was pretty much the parking lot, doing, still doing cleanup, started our sweeping program. It was, which is a month behind, at least a month behind. We usually start around March 19th, and we started in the middle of April, and then we had a couple of storms and that had to redo what we swept the first part. So that's, that's really behind the eight ball, but we're starting to catch up now. Had a water break, had to do some work on that. And a lot of Memorial Day work, we, the fire department helped us out. We went around and checked a couple of poles. I did a pole, a couple of poles last year for the pulley systems on the flags. We changed a couple of pulleys this year and a couple of ropes, and the fire depart, fire department helped us out with that, so that was pretty good. And other than that, that was about it. The annual bids were done on May 29th. Hope you have a copy of, of them.
Selectmen, you have colored copies in front of you.
Yeah, the dark stuff, you know, mine's.
Yeah, that's okay.
We're not allowed to have a color printer, but, uh.
Me neither.
I know. There's one person that says we can't have one, but, uh, but the dark things are where there was no bid.
Okay.
On the, on the second, uh, on the last three pages. We didn't have a bid for the sidewalks, that was a little disappointing.
Doesn't that happen often?
Yeah, uh, we actually, you know, there was, you know, a subcontractor involved a couple of years ago, so we called him directly, "Oh yeah, sure, yep," sent it to me, so we sent it to him, and still didn't bid. So, uh, you know, you can't, you can only do what you can do. But were people notified, absolutely, but, uh, just not bidding it.
Yeah, not big enough.
Not, it's, it's not big enough.
Yeah. Someday it will be.
Yeah, essentially, uh, well, they, they put the underground power up through the sidewalks, that's the place for it to go, then we can get new ones.
Yeah. Any questions from the board on the bids? Is there a motion then to approve the bids as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, 5-0.
Now the water study. Essentially, uh, it came down to three options. Option number one.
This is the McGilpin Road.
McGilpin Road, yeah. Uh, option, or alternate number one, was a, a feed from the existing Sturbridge Water System. Option number two was a feed from the Southbridge Water System. And option number three was, uh, an in-house treatment system, charcoal filter, which would, which would have been, uh, the, the type of system you needed, you would need to alleviate the contamination that was noted in the first few rounds of testing from the DEP. So, one thing that I was a little surprised at, uh, how close alternate one and alternate two were, one was 8,100,000, the other was basically 8,200,000, and, uh, the only thing that I was told during the course of several meetings is that the point of connection that they were talking about for the number two system in Southbridge had, had, they hadn't got the Southbridge Water Main System to that point yet, so it would be a little delay in that connection to be able to bring it into Sturbridge. But, uh, he didn't note that in, in this report, so he might have been mistaken. But verbally, he told us that that, the connection point wasn't in the ground yet. So, they are starting, I see some equipment out there. First bidder, they kind of took it away, and the second, or denied taking it, and the second bidder is gonna end up getting the job, so, uh, you see some of his equipment, or some of his equipment is out there, so they should be starting that pretty soon. But, uh, and the third system with the in-house system, what happens? The, the difficult part about that is, is setting up the system and then, uh, getting, really trying to find to the treatment and through additional tests. And they said quarterly, but you might have to do it more than quarterly. You know, you might have to do it for the first year, do it monthly to see, make sure the charcoal filter, uh, it'll go, you know, six months, and then, and then change it. So, that's still, that's a little up in the air. And, uh, the secondary part about doing pre-treatment on iron and manganese, which would essentially clog the charcoal filter. If you don't, if you don't take that, it's just exactly what the town does. We take the iron and manganese out of the well water, uh, and, and to put it into the town water system. It would be almost the same principle on the private, on a private, smaller scale, but, so you don't blind the filter, the charcoal off, and make it inoperable, you know, after 25 days, or 30 days, or 40 days, or whatever. So, there is a lot of uncertainty on the first year, maybe even two, of getting the thing up, running, uh, testing it, making sure that the frequencies, uh, you know, changing the filter, it's gonna make for six months, or it's, you know, could, maybe it'll make eight months. But, uh, it is strictly, you know, it's an unknown, it's a, right now, they're guessing it's six months, so that number, uh, will, would fluctuate. And then the question of who's gonna be responsible to run them, uh, you know, are you gonna run them, is it like, say, the town, is the town gonna run it forever? You know, it gets, it gets to be, um, a questionable thing. And then if, then if there's work in the house done and it affected the filter and we weren't notified of that, uh, you know, there's a lot of things that could slip through the cracks with that type of home system. So, ultimately, the recommendation comes back to, uh, using the town water system. We wouldn't have an interconnection, we wouldn't be, uh, dealing with dissimilar materials for chlorination. The, the design that was provided by McClure Engineering was reviewed for the, the pump station, uh, booster station upgrade. That was reviewed underneath the original scope of work, and that won't have to be altered, it won't have to be increased or resized, or anything like that, so. There's a lot of things that have been looked at, and a lot of things have been analyzed, and, uh, for the highest water quality, ultimately, the best water would come from Sturbridge, because it's closer, and, uh, like, there was a notation about the length of a, a dead-end line, because even if the line came up to Fisk Hill Road, we still wouldn't want it connected, interconnected on the pipes, because of the different treatment options, so. Ultimately, go back to doing a town system, and you save a little bit of money in the, in the, in that approach, and everything has been looked at, and hopefully will work.
Okay, any questions from the board? Mike?
Yeah, you, using the recommended, uh, um, you know, using the town system, there would be adequate fire protection as well for the.
Well, that's, yeah, they did, they did some hydraulic modeling. That was really how we started the whole thing off. We, uh, we flowed stuff on the top of Fisk Hill and, uh, to see, you know, what we'd get, you know, down, projected down below. And, uh, it is down gradient, you know, the majority of the, the elevation of the, of the whole, of the whole Fisk Hill is already serviced by water, and everything else will pretty much be down gradient of the existing system. So, uh, we wouldn't see an elevated, you know, additional elevation in pressure spikes, or anything like that. So, uh, they claim that, you know, within reason it'll work. Probably won't be perfect, but it'll work. The only thing it doesn't do, and way back when I did my original discussion, was, uh, the original 1935 or 34 lines, whatever, come up, came up Whittmore Road and went down Fisk Hill toward 131. Some of the offshoots to the north of Whittmore Road are in AC pipe, and, uh, this 8.1 million dollar thing does not propose or, uh, add that, you know, ripping out that AC and putting ductile iron right from Whittmore Road over. So, uh, it is kind of what it is, but, um, I, I would have, you know, preferred to see that. But, uh, that's not in here, and that, that was part of my, you know, originally, when we were talking 30 million, it was already going all the way from 131 to Route 20 and doing it all, so.
Is that?
Yeah, that.
Mary?
I just had a. So it seems like both alternatives cost about the same amount of money. I mean, by 100,000, which, we're talking 8 million, it's kind of.
Same money.
No, 8.1 or 8.2.
Right.
Is this about what you, to me, it seems so expensive. I can't imagine that the homeowners on those roads could, like, shoulder this. When we did, when other phases of sewer were put in, um, water, how mu, what kind of ballpark did they cost? I mean, I'm on town services and I don't remember, but, like, when we did Fisk Hill and Wallace Road and.
Uh, it's probably up around, you know, 175 a foot.
Yeah, but what does that equate to in terms of millions? Like, how much more?
$125 a foot, like.
How much less, how much more expensive is this, um, service to do McGilpin than it was our other neighborhoods?
Well, some of the other neighborhoods, you'd pay zero, because the contractor extends it to a subdivision.
No, I know, I'm not talking about that. Well, well, what about when we did Fisk Hill? Do we know about what it costs?
Oh, no, that was.
Was it 2 million though, or was it 3 million?
It's basically 792,000 at $150 a foot, and it's, uh, for a mile. And it's $924,000 for a mile at, uh, 175 a foot, so. It's expensive, you know.
Well, let me give an, so we don't know what it cost when we did Fisk Hill. What about Woodside Circle, when we put services there? I'm just questioning how, in, in terms of us coming up.
Just to compare.
Just to compare, yeah, I'm just trying to compare.
Greg, would you be able to get a comparison of what some of the others cost as opposed to this?
I don't think they would.
Close. It's kind of tricky, thanks.
I know. Sewers and waters. Well, still, though, I mean, I'm sure it had a breakdown. I'm just thinking.
The developer's always done the, well, both, actually.
Well, the developer hasn't done any other, we've paid for them, right? I mean, when we've put in, we've put in water after the fact in existing neighborhoods.
Well, can I give a, can I give a suggestion? Um, prior to start talking about how the residents or even the town are gonna pay for it, I think we have two other bites at the apple before we get to this. And one of the recommendations that I would make for the board is, first and foremost, you remember, we're waiting for results on the contamination of the neighborhood in the first.
Which is gonna be my next question. Because, I mean, they, there's no way, I mean, 8 million dollars, there's not a lot of houses around that road. I can't believe that anybody would be able to afford it. So I'm wondering, are we any closer to the DEPs calling, Casella or the State Department?
I don't have that answer. But option number two would be, you know, we were granted these funds from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts because of the unique situation we were in. Now granted, they only gave us 75,000, but, but certainly, I would go back to our state legislators and, and let them know that, um, you know, in the upcoming budgets for next year, this is a significant ask on behalf of the town of Sturbridge, and we think that it's appropriate, given the situation that these residents find themselves in. So, you know, it's gonna take some time, this is not gonna be something that's gonna be done immediately.
Oh, I understand.
Yeah, because this study's not gonna be done till, when, 2019?
I'm sorry?
The study that, um.
Yeah, that was a lead ion study, and that was actually out of the DEP.
DEP, yeah.
You're talking the DEP study?
Yeah.
To EPA, and that's gonna take a while.
Yeah, everything takes.
Through the, through the chair.
Mike?
You know, another avenue that we may be able to pursue would be to, um, apply for a rural water grant, too. We're still eligible for tho, for those grants. We, we probably will be for another couple of years at least, so.
It's close, yeah.
It's close.
In terms of being rural, you mean?
Yeah, they use.
How long of being rural?
Yeah, they, but they will use 2010, uh.
Yeah.
Census until 2020 census is complete, so. So, that might.
It's close.
You know, I know, you know, other towns, like Belvedere Town, had a contamination problem, and they got a rural water grant, so. That, that would take priority on a grant application.
Michael, is the, are those competitive grants? Meaning that do they have?
They're competitive to this, to the extent that, uh, that, uh, you, you know, there's different criteria for, you know, like, a contaminated area of town would have priority over another project that would not have, uh, you know, contamination issue.
Are you gonna get 8 million dollars? It's highly unlikely, you know, you'll get a portion of that.
No, but if you got, if you got 1 million from the rural water grant and 7 million from the state or Casella.
Or something, yeah.
Or somebody.
But that, that could be another thing we could leverage, I, I would think, or try to leverage.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, you also have the, um, proposal for Geotechnical Services.
Yeah, actually, uh, the, the next phase would be to, uh, find out what's in the ground, and, uh.
This would help us get, uh, the answers as to how much this is actually gonna cost us.
Right, and, you know, right now, the, the, it's aligned for the 25th. Started on the 25th and worked four consecutive days, so, uh, we put in a request for, you know, get the police notified, so they can get a, um, uh, detail out there, and then, you know, hopefully, if this gets amended or signed today, we can maintain that schedule.
And remember, these are not town funds, these are still using the state funds.
These are still state funds, yeah.
Right, and it's 36,000. Any questions from the board on it? No, anyone wanna make a motion to approve? So moved.
Moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, do you have?
I do, I would ask that the motion just reflect that they're authorizing the chairman to sign on behalf of the board.
Oh, okay, do you want? So moved.
A motion to authorize the chairman to sign.
Okay, Mike, you're second on that?
I second it.
Okay, all in favor?
So, I will give you this one. And you can let them know tomorrow to begin that work. We anticipate that that work will be done in the next several days. It'll need to be done before the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah, well, it's Monday through Thursday next week, rain or shine, if, if it's signed, so. If it rains, they gotta come.
So you'll let them, you'll let them know?
Huh?
You'll let them know?
Yeah, I'll tell them, yep.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, is that all for us, Greg?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Shane?
Good evening.
How you doing?
Good.
You all look so tan working outside.
Yeah, it's not a bad thing.
No.
Use sunscreen, though.
I do.
Do you really?
Yeah, I just, I just get really dark.
His complexion. You have his two reports.
Yes.
Yes, I'll start with any questions on the operation reports.
Okay, anybody have any questions on May and June reports?
Did we already do April? April?
No, April and May.
April and May.
I have May and June. You have May and June?
I have May and June.
No, the, 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 the May report was for April and the, the, the one that's dated May sixteenth was for the month of April.
I always go by the top, yeah.
That's.
Thank you. Chase, you're on the same train, ain't you?
I'm in the same boat, yes.
Any questions then on April or May? No, they looked.
Um, like Greg stated, we had the water main break on Hall Road that we dug up and repaired, twelve inch water line. Things are going to happen. Um, we found a big rock laying underneath the, uh, the pipe and when pipe settles over a period of time, eventually it's going to break. So that was repaired. Like you stated earlier, we're in the water band. I looked at the stream limits this morning, stream gauges. Unless we get, um, a lot of rain, we'll probably be in it right through September. It's the way it appears right now anyways. We've been busy painting hydrants, finished the flushing program. All the public hydrants were, uh, checked for proper operation. We had to repair four or five of them, um, just due to age. And we have one or two that we need to dig up and replace. They, they work, just don't work that great. Um, I called in to dig safes today. We'll be replacing those in the next couple of weeks. And we're really, we got a sanitary survey this year on the water side from the DEP, so. Been painting buildings, cleaning yards, cleaning the inside of stations, things of that nature, uh, cleaning pump stations. The older stations were put on, back online. Besides that, it's business as usual.
Okay, anything else from the board? So everything's going okay?
Yeah, I did, um, we did have a little problem at the wastewater plant. I put it in a report. We, um, ended up losing one of the processes. Due to glitch in the silo, lime feeding silo, so the plant basically got wiped out and we had to, uh, reseed it. We got the plant back in a week. Honestly, thought it'd be more like a month, so, um, the only thing that came out of that, which is a little concerning, is the pH was so high it wiped out that whole process. But we took zinc samples because we wanted to know what the zinc results would be, the best zinc results to date. So, we know how to get rid of the zinc, but the process we use just can't, can't do it. So, um, it was, it was interesting, to say the least, and we put some alarms in so that the overfeed can't happen again. We had to notify the state, the EPA, Mass, Fish and Wildlife were notified. Had to do some river samples and we actually passed, um, toxicity the following week, which is basically what goes to the river. So, um, as much as it was a big event, it was something we controlled right away and, like I said, we had the plant back up and running in a week.
So for one week, it wasn't operating at all?
Oh, it operates, but just, when you don't have that process, it's just basically washing through. It just takes, we had to bring in, uh, basically bugs from other plants that we operate. We brought some in from Lemons, so we brought some in from Southbridge. And once we got those in there, the process came back fairly quick.
So was there, so I'm sorry, I just wanted to stand, so was, there was not contamination going into the river or there was?
No, it wasn't contamination. It's just, um, high pH and high solids, high BOD. And until you get that process back, that's, that's what's happened. So, uh, yeah, it was, it was a weekend not very much fun. I can tell you that.
Did, were we cited by DEP or not?
No, um, we were involved with, you know, talked to them basically on a daily basis. The only thing they asked us to do was take some river samples, which we did. Um, the pH got as high as nine, which is a little high, but there was no fish kill or anything like that. So, um, it's all documented with them. I don't anticipate any, any other actions.
So, so the, the lime feed failed or it?
No, it didn't fail.
It, it pumped too much in it?
Exactly. So there, there was a glitch in the way the, uh, software works, looks at the weight and we were getting a new, um, delivery and the feed kicked on and it was still looking at the old weight and it dumped in six thousand pounds in two hours. So, um, the pH went through the roof, wiped out the bugs. But again, and we got it back right away. But the more concerning thing is, you know, we're battling that zinc limit and we know how to get rid of it now. We just can't do it with the process we have. So, um, we're still working on time, with time bomb on, uh, the zinc pilot, which I hope to wrap up in the next couple of months.
Anything else for us? Mike, you all set?
Wouldn't, um, is there any chance that, uh, just increasing the, the pH that you operate at slightly might help the zinc issue?
The P, yeah, we.
You already did that?
Yeah, we tried it. We piloted, um.
Didn't work.
The pH, the pH was above twelve when we had that lime overfeed and we run a pH about seven and the bugs can't handle anything over a pH eighty-five. So, um, and like Greg just stated, we tried it and, look, we're meeting the limit. The bottom line is, you're probably going to be out of the septic business. That's the way I see it right now. Which is, you know, as you're aware, is, it's a big revenue loss. But permits permit.
Okay, anything else or?
No, that's it.
So you'll keep us updated?
I will. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have Annie Rossioli from the Recreation Department.
Hello.
Hello, Annie.
Good evening. All right, we actually have quite a bit of updates. Spring's pretty busy for the rec department. I believe the last time I was here was after, um, the tree lighting contest, or it's tree lighting ceremony coloring contest. Um, so since then, um, we had the ice ring out. I couldn't recall if we had talked about that last time. That was only out for about a month. Hopefully this upcoming year, we have better weather cooperation. And then if we can get it out earlier in December, I think that'd benefit us a little bit better. So in March, we had our sixth annual ham toss. Um, we had sixty-five attendees and those are all ages from four to seventeen. It's a really fun night. Once again, it went really well and a big thank you to McNucks. Um, they always donate the hams that each of the raffle winners get. In April, we had our bus trip to New York City. We filled the bus once again, um, much better weather than December, so I can confidently say I will look forward to the April trips. But we'll do another one in December. We might fill two buses this year, so we're looking into that. At the end of April, our volleyball and indoor basketball leagues ended. We'll start those up again in the fall as every year before. It's a really high turnout and I already have people calling me to make sure it's going again in the fall, so I was happy about that. And was thinking of exploring doing not so formally a league through the rec, but at least scheduled pickup games so people might know the, the right nights to go to the new courts, use the basketball, meet their friends there. So now, in June, busiest month, our concert series has begun as of last week. That was our first kickoff date and it was really awesome to see all the parents out with the picnic blankets and whatnot. Um, and then next Monday, our summer program starts. And those signups come in very steadily.
How many are you up to now roughly?
Right now, um, I'm half twenty from ones I haven't filed from just what was dropped off on Friday alone and at least an additional ten. We don't charge a penalty fee until after the first week of signups. So all of the kind of, um, seasoned attendees, they know that they can wait until last minute to sign up. Where are we at? We are running the mini camp again this year. That's going to run for two weeks in July, back to back. July sixteenth and then the following week, both of those times, it's eight to ten AM. Um, and the mini camp is run through our regular staff plus two volunteers that are occupational therapy students at Bay Path. And it's, it's really interesting and I think it's a learning experience for everyone to have the students come in and kind of teach activities that they've learned that benefit a little bit more than just the direct games. And as of this weekend officially, the tennis courts and the basketball courts were opened. Um, do you want me to pass this down?
Please.
I have family members that use the basketball courts and I want to tell you they look, I was not there, but they're fantastic. God bless you.
Bless you.
Really.
Yeah.
Nice job, very nice job.
Thank you to Greg and Mark at DPW because they oversaw the entire project. They made sure there was no shortcuts.
Beautiful child, bless you.
Just going down that one drive now, it's, it's so much more refreshing.
Yeah, it looks like them.
In addition to the tennis courts being opened, we kind of coordinated with a group from the senior center to offer pickleball at the tennis courts. Um, because that seems to be a trend that's on the rise a bit more. So, we're going to have pickleball on Saturdays from eight-thirty to ten-thirty and then Tuesdays from three to five, just to give, um, it's actually a rather large group, but to give them the set time to always meet because they line the courts. But based off of emails from the past year, pickleball, it sounds to be the new sport. So.
For seniors at least.
For seniors.
Cedar Lake was treated for algae on June twelfth. There was a lot of signs everywhere. Um, just to recap, it's ready for swimming and, um, it's been the full week now. A thank you to the Betterment Committee for allowing us to purchase a new ping pong table and an additional handicap accessible table for the rec area. Um, the new one that we got is flat, so we're going to be able to use it for arts and crafts. And I have several campers really excited for that. Lastly, uh, the committee's regrouping after the results of the annual town meeting. I was really happy that we offered babysitting this year because I had thirty-six kids signed up. And I think it's something that we'd like to do every year, regardless if rec has anything, um, relevant at that meeting. But it was nice to see that utilized because in two years ago, it was introduced and the number was a lot lower. But I thought thirty-five was a good start. And we talked a little fast, but.
Any questions from the board? Mary?
I just have one. I agree with the babysitting. I think we should have that all the time.
Yeah, it was, um.
And I think it'll get younger residents.
I left the list of the names in the car. I wanted to acknowledge them, but they were all members of the National Honor Society. Um, and I think that Tantascu was interested. I already told them I want to go forward with this every year so they can expect to have, um, some volunteer hours there.
Okay. My question was, I know you said you're regrouping after the vote. Uh, I'm sure the rec committee members were disappointed with the vote. So when you say you're regrouping, I've had a few people ask me, you know, where are they going to look now? What about the rec? And so what, have you, how many, how many meetings have you had since?
We've only had one. It was a very brief meeting. Um, we're going to meet early July and really be able to focus on what direction we're going with the fields then.
So the question that was asked of me by a few people is, you're not moving forward with Town Barn, um, are you still going to move forward with trying to en, enlarge the amount of fields that are available for youth and adult sports? Or are you going to put it on the back burner for a few years was the question?
They seem very ambitious to keep it up and going. Um, at the last meeting, they did decide that they would like to bring the Town Barn field project to the special town meeting. But I think that if we have a little bit more research, um, for instance, the Shepherd parcel, that we are going to start exploring the deed again on that. That may change. Um, but that was kind of our rushed conclusion that at the very least, they want to go forward on these same plans because they still fully believe in the plans.
And you know there's conservation restrictions on that now?
Yeah.
Okay, I've just, because it's a lot more complicated now than it was when we tried to amend the deed a few years ago.
We have a write-up on it too. Have you spoken to, um, Michael Suppanat about it because he.
Yeah, just, so we had touched base, um, on his interest with that and then he was looking into it, um, and then we haven't really had a follow-up meeting yet.
Yeah, there, I did attend that, that, uh, Recreation Committee meeting, uh, since the, the vote and, uh, they, they were talking about bringing it back to, uh, you know, the special town meeting and I, I think, uh, a little bit of work or some substantial amount of work needs to be done before we get back to town meeting and that's why I, I sent a memo to the town, town administrator, which I believe is in your packet. And, uh, the first thing I'd like to make a motion on is to ask the town administrator to work with the, uh, the Recreation Committee to investigate and report back to the Board of Selectmen and to the Recreation Committee itself regarding the feasibility of modifying the use of the Shepherd parcel with the intent of placing an article on our next town, special town meeting. And I had sent along the, uh, the, uh, information from the November seventh, two thousand and eleven special town meeting. It is a little bit more complicated now, but it's still not, uh, not impossible for the town to allow, um, recreation on the Shepherd parcel. It's, uh, it, of course, would require two-thirds vote of town meeting and also vote of the state legislature and, uh, and also, uh, um, with the holder of the conservation restriction to, uh, to modify the, the conservation restriction on the parcel as well. But, uh, it, uh, I mean, the town's people are, you know, looking at the price tag on, on Town Barn Field and it's considerably less, uh, the original estimates on, on the Shepherd's parcel to, substantially less money. Uh, the second thing I'd like to make a motion on and ask the town administrator, uh, to help, work with the, the Recreation Committee and, uh, prepare a budget estimate for the cost of soil borings and a, also a peer review of the design of the Town Barn and Shepherd, uh, parcel field projects and report back to the Selectmen and, and with the intent to place an article on the next special, uh, special town meeting. I, looking at the, the, uh, cost estimate for, uh, that, that was submitted for, um, uh, for the Town Barn field, uh, there's twenty thousand cubic yards of rock excavation and, it, it, it just, uh, doesn't sound anywhere near correct or close to being that quantity of ledge excavation on that site. And I, you know, I believe there may be an error there or something and that's why we'd be calling for a peer review and actually get the data we need to get an accurate estimate of the volume of, uh, ledge, uh, removal, uh, that's, that's required for that project because it, it just, the, it just doesn't seem correct at all. That's an awful large quantity. And also the amount of material that needs to be hauled in there, it seems relatively high. So, uh, I'd like to, I'd like to take a, take a closer look and have somebody, so, somebody other than water field design review the, the plants.
Annie, did you have, um, estimates from water for design for more borings? Did you ever get an estimate on how much more they would cost?
No, I, for some reason.
You requested it.
Wasn't it up to ten thousand? I, I can double check.
I think ten thousand was what was said at the information session.
Ten thousand is sticking out, yeah. I just don't want to say inaccurate. Um, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure if it would be ten thousand for all additional testing or depending on how many sets you needed. I'm not familiar with that.
Can I just have a mic? Mary, because I know you're going to make a motion. So a peer review is basically a second opinion?
Right. It's, it's, it's somebody to go through the entire design review, the calculations and the engineering calculations and, and it's not to recreate the wheel. It's to review what we got there and ma, make sure it's accurate. And, you know.
And it's just a peer review on the ledge aspect? No, I'm just trying to keep the, I mean, I'm going to support the motion, but I'm just trying to fully understand it before I do. You know, is it just the ledge that we're going to give a peer review on or?
Peer review of, of the whole project. I, uh, you know, for example, some of the grading I could see on the plan doesn't look like, uh, it's, the, you know, you have, uh, from one. I could see on the plan doesn't look like it's, you know, you have, from one end of the soccer field to the other, you have two feet of distance of difference in elevation between goals and that's not usually the way the soccer field is designed. Both goals are at the same elevation in the center of the fields.
How much money does that, what, how much money do we pay?
So, that sort of thing as well is to see if there's any, any strange things happening with the design. So, it's not just the ledge, it's just look at...
You want the whole thing re...
I want the whole thing. I would like to see the, the project reviewed by somebody else, other than Waterfield.
And what kind of money is that?
We don't know.
We don't know.
No, I know, just a range. Is it a $50,000 thing? Is it 100? Is it 10?
We don't know where it would come from.
Because...
I think the whole design was 110, 120,000.
But if they relook at the whole thing, won't it cost almost the same amount?
No, it shouldn't.
No? I don't know. This is not my area of knowledge.
Same. We can look into it more, but I would not imagine, because that would be the same if we spend about 120,000 so far. That'd be same as a company coming in and starting it from the very scratch. So, they would be more so reviewing all the information that's been gathered. So, I would imagine it'd be significantly less because they're reviewing facts or data given to them instead of going and having to get that data first. I, we can work on getting quotes and stuff soon. Would that be, a peer review, would that be from per se, a competing company or like one professional engineer?
Well, I had, I would, what I had in mind was, you know, another company that, that does that kind of work.
Yeah.
But it could, if you had somebody that was qualified, another, another individual engineer that has done these kind of projects before, I certainly would not, I certainly would say, you know, you could hire anyone that's competent in the field.
Okay.
Cheers.
I would like to give my credit for bringing the Shepherd parcel up and I'd really like to see us all try to work together and explore every possible avenue to, to open that back up. And if we're talking about pieces as well, I mean, is there any way we could do some type of study on the rec area across the street there? I mean, we have these beautiful courts already built there. We have facilities already built there.
Yeah. The plans for the rec, we've had them designed for quite some time through CME. We have a couple of different examples, but those date back, I mean, at least 10 years. And I can forward them on if you want to review it. There was a couple of options. Rec was most ideal for a Legion-sized field. We thought that by now Little League multipurpose would already be in. We had someone who was interested if we want to go forward with Legion-sized field. They are donating a portion of money. But Legion isn't, an extra Legion field would be a benefit to the community. It's not the direct need right now.
Is that all that would fit at the rec? Is one...
Pretty much, yeah.
Oh, I thought there was more than that.
And then there was area for parking, but the parking is still relatively minimal. We would be able to use the skate park area because the plans were developed when the skate park was still there, so that's included. So, we could probably expand a bit over there, but that almost seems like a safer route for the parking.
But it's, there's not room for like three fields?
No.
Two fields?
No.
And the committee still has not given any thought to the Plimpton property?
Plimpton, we're still waiting to find out where the CR will be in place because they have the endangered species right now. So, we're kind of working with conservation, but waiting for them to have an area more pinpoint.
Okay, because like the information Michael's asking for is going to take time. It's also going to take money. And if we're talking special town meeting in September, that's really cutting it close, time-wise, Leon, right?
Yeah, no one likes this idea apparently.
I know. Those are the no-votes.
No, I mean, look, we, frankly, we may not have certified free cash certified by the time our special town meeting comes around. So, that doesn't mean that we couldn't bring forward an article. It doesn't give us a lot of time to go out and get quotes. I think having a conversation, I mean, I know the no motion has been made as of yet, Mr. Supranat, but I think that having Michael, I mean, sorry, having Greg find a reputable firm to come in and do a peer review as Mr. Supranat is suggesting and will they have time to be able to, will we have time to be able to get the money in order to pay this person? The chairman is correct. It will be a little tight.
Yeah.
But, you know, that doesn't also mean that we couldn't have another special town meeting, you know? We're not limited.
No, I know. We've, most times not had one in September.
Yeah. My thought was to go to town meeting in September to, to get the money to do the peer review. You know, that's...
Yeah, what I'm saying is that...
I don't know how much it is.
We might not know where the money gonna come from if free cash isn't certified and that's one avenue we want to use.
Okay.
Priscilla?
The Shepherd parcel, I mean, I don't have any objection to that. Are we restricted 100% on Shepherd parcel? Remember maybe when we went through all this prior to a few years ago?
Yeah, there's a, there's a good synopsis.
I saw that.
Mike, did you do the synopsis?
No, that was written up in 2011 by a member of the Board of Selectmen, it sounds like. It might be, it might be Mary...
I, I think that's me. Yeah, no, I think it's my...
It looks, it looks like Mary's...
I was thinking, I was like, wow, that's very well done. I'm just teasing. I think that was my...
She's not...
That would've been my guess, the way it was written.
I have another part of that question.
Priscilla?
Annie, let me ask you a question from the, from a recreation standpoint. Would the rec committee be totally adverse to, let's say, we can use the Shepherd, let's hypothetically say we can put one field on Shepherd and we can put one field at the Town Barn hypothetically, would they be adverse to that if the price tag was right?
The rec, you'd be right.
I don't... No, I meant, no, I mean the Town Barn.
Yeah, I don't think they would be, the original plans with the Town Barn was to be a combination of Shepherd. So, the area at Shepherd is great for exactly four multipurpose fields and that's what the true need is. The benefits of having like the Town Barn and having the second Little League is for tournaments and more convenience and they still need the spot, but the multipurpose field is by far the true need. And that's what the Shepherd parcel would have been great for. The idea was to have four there and then an additional Little League across the street. The region that the ledge is in, Town Barn, is the multipurpose field.
Okay.
So, ideally speaking, I think what the rec would like to see if this were even a possibility, but I don't know because of the deed, is multipurpose fields across the street, Shepherd parcel, and then a second field put into Town Barn just to utilize that location a bit more. And then we wouldn't really have to touch the right side. You'd lose kind of the idea for the playground and the bocce courts, but, starting with the need, I guess.
Because I'm thinking that, I know that a lot of people have, I've spoken to after, are in favor of the fields. There's no, I've not met one person yet honestly and truly that was against them. It was the price tag that scared them off.
Yeah.
So, that's why I'm just trying to, I think, think out the box, outside the box a little bit. When you look at this plan again, will you be looking at someone coming in to take the ledge out so that we don't pay for that ledge excavation, that they take it and keep it?
We haven't been able to find any company willing to do that. That would be...
Ask Lynn because she talked to me about this.
Yeah, we've contacted three companies. And I, Lynn contacted them. I didn't even get phone calls back from half of them, but I've spent quite some time and I've worked with Greg too on it. He had given me a couple of suggestions. In one of the off-years that it's valued really high, someone might be interested, but we haven't, we haven't been able to. And I've looked back into it since Lynn has too.
Thanks.
But the Shepherd parcel, I'm under the impression that it's flat enough that it needs minimal work. So, if, we might not have to touch, if it's, again, deed, no idea if it's a possibility, we might not have to touch any ledge at Town Barn.
Annie, you said multipurpose field is your number one need.
Yeah.
What's next? Little League fields or what?
Little League fields, yeah, because it's hard because I don't want to leave softball out. Softball only has one field under our jurisdiction, but they do work really well with Burgess in terms of complaints and what the leagues have told me themselves, Little League would be next.
Okay.
For all of the age divisions.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Well, just to go on what Priscilla said about the ledge is, you know, a project like the Town Barn Field, if, if a contractor was, was looking at it, they wouldn't be hauling the rock out. They would bring in a portable crusher after the ledge is blasted, crush it and use it for gravel material under the parking areas and roadways. You know, that, the way the estimate is set up doesn't make sense to me.
I agree.
Michael was back in 2011.
I know, I mean...
Muri?
I think it's great to try to pursue both of these, but I'll just say my opinion on this. I think the Shepherd parcel is gonna cause a lot of, it's gonna cost us a lot legally too. I mean, I'm looking at when I wrote that support, that was in 2011. That didn't even require any money. That was just to modify the deed and it got voted down. And I feel now there's conservation restrictions on that.
Yeah.
And I just don't want to see rec set up to fail again. I mean, this was seven years ago. We're bringing it back. It's a lot more complicated now. It's more than just changing the deed.
Yeah.
And I'm just, I'm just saying that. And then we go forward again and it's all these residents were concerned about the league legally changing a deed and it, honestly, I thought it was silly. I thought it was a very straightforward thing to do. We got councils, go ahead on it, but there were residents threatening to sue the town. So, I just feel as though if, if it works, that's great, but it's, it's going to be a much bigger deal than it was in 2011 because now there's CRs on it. And we're gonna get, have to get probably town council, but also somebody that specializes more in, in this kind of thing. More like an environmental litigator. I don't know. But I just feel like, I, I hate to see us set everybody up again...
Yeah.
For a failure.
And again, the committee hasn't even really discussed the Shepherd parcel in detail again, but we did all agree it's certainly worth looking into.
Of course.
And then we'll have to see what direction it's going to go and kind of, that's what I mean by regroup. They haven't had it for quite enough time.
Right. But as far as Shepherd, without a legal opinion on that, don't have them move, put too much energy into it until, you know, we consult how you remove CRs because I have no idea.
Yeah.
And, and it's not just changing a deed at this point. You know, I think it's gonna require more than that, which is too bad, you know?
Yeah.
It's too bad. So...
Okay, Mike?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to point out the, the motion wasn't to go ahead with it. It was to explore the feasibility of doing it.
But that's gonna require a legal.
If we come in...
Opinion. There's no way to look at Shepherd without getting a legal opinion at this point.
You can't.
I agree. I'm just...
Now, because...
Because it's definitely feasible. It costs less money. They, we had designs, yeah, they had designs all ready to go. So, we know, you know...
It's feasible.
It's feasible in terms of the land. Now, we have legal complications. So, we need a legal opinion to make it really feasible.
Well, the feasibility, what, that I was talking about wasn't construction feasibility because I know it's constructable. The feasibility is the legal feasibility.
Oh, okay. Good. Great. I support you.
That I wanted to look into, whether, you know, is it, and you make a good point. Is it gonna, just to, just to, to go through the, the, all the work that it will take to lift the, the CR, you know, is, is that gonna cost the town, you know, 20,000 or is it gonna be 50? We don't know. So, that's part of the feasibility. Is it, how much is that gonna cost us to, to, to do that if we can? It may be an absolute roadblock.
Do you want to cut down your motions then? Not two, you want separate motions?
Yeah, I, well, I see it as two, two separate issues is whether, you know, we'll look at this Shepherd parcel and then...
Now, you can reiterate your first one because with all the discussion, it's...
Okay, the first, first motion is to ask the town administrator to investigate and report back to the Board of Selectmen and Recreation Committee regarding the feasibility of modifying the use of the Shepherd parcel with the intent of placing an article on our next town meeting warrant.
I'll second it.
I just have a question. That's legal feasibility?
That's what he said or...
Why? It doesn't say that here. That's why I'm asking. Is it legal feasibility?
Okay, I'll insert the word, word legal before feasibility in my motion.
Second as amended.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Five to nothing. Rebecca?
The second motion, I would, is to ask the town administrator to prepare a budget estimate for the cost of soil borings and a peer review of the design of the Town Barn and Shepherd parcel field projects and report back to the Board of Selectmen and Recreation Committee with the intent of placing an article on our next town meeting. Now, I would add to that logically, if the first motion was not feasible, we would not spend the money on the set, on the peer review of the Shepherd parcel because, you know, but that's my motion.
So, it's a peer review for both?
Peer review for both, you know, if, if the, if the first part, my first motion was successful.
I'll second it.
Any discussion, Priscilla?
Yeah, I have, I just have a question. If the first one's not feasible, I understand the second one, but you're taking it to the next town meeting, not to a special town meeting. Am I right? Because, I mean, we can have as many special town meetings as we need.
Yeah. I, I said our next town meeting warrant, which most likely will be a special town meeting.
Well, yeah, but if you wanna wordplay, some people will get hung up on the fact...
Right, they will. I don't want anything, I don't want anything to destroy this.
Our town meeting is June. Special town meeting is...
A next special town meeting. Okay. I will add the word special for town meeting.
I'll second it as amended.
We don't want to give you anything, I personally ask these questions because I don't want anything to hang up to say, why is it coming in January when they said it was gonna be in June? Follow me? That's to try to cover every little hole there might exist. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, all in favor? Again, five to nothing. Becky? Okay, anything else, Annie?
I believe that is it, unless anyone had any other questions.
Okay, just one last question. Were you able to get all the summer help you needed for the rec programs?
So, we have the entire staff filled, except we are short one lifeguard. So, we're moving our sub up for the first week. Our head lifeguard of five years stepped down on Monday, so we are filling his position, but in the meantime, we have plenty of staff and we have a huge sub list this year.
Oh, that's good.
But we are still formally looking for lifeguards.
Okay. Is it on the rec website?
It's on, yep, the rec website. Originally, we had already run everything in the papers, but all the other positions are filled except for lifeguards. And then I was going to ask if you could put another, in your town administrator blog that we're still, I just haven't gotten to email you yet. But I've contacted the high school and the YMCA and because of the pool closure, the last course wasn't completed. So, kind of, we've always worked really well between the three departments on shifting people over and everyone's short this year. So, we'll find someone.
Yeah, well, good.
She want me to do that on my lunch hour? Is that what you're saying?
So, thank you, Annie.
Yeah.
Annie, is she here?
Oh, okay.
Okay, next we have Tom Chamberlain, tree warden. Tom?
Talk about money.
[laughing]
Well, at least we'll move forward.
Three minutes, Tom.
Three minutes?
[laughing]
Solve the problem in three minutes.
Hey, $100,000, I'll be good.
Just tell us, just tell us what the problem is.
Well, the, the problem is, we have somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,000 dead or tree, street trees that are either dead or need some serious pruning due to the gypsy moth infestation over the last three years and combined with the drought. And that's, that's my dart on the wall, guesstimate, based on driving. If you have been driving around town, I'm sure you've noticed pockets on just about every major street in town from Brookfield Road to Holland Road, Cedar Street, Arnold, New Boston, up on Podunk. You know, there's pockets and then there's individual trees spread throughout the town. Even on the Lead Mine Mountain property, the knoll, right across from the Route 84 flyover, if you look at that knoll, about 25% of that knoll is dead trees from the gypsy moth. That's, I don't know what the Conservation Commission's gonna do with that, but, you know, it also is affecting some of our open space lands too. So, the long and short of it is to try to get a much better count and handle as to the extent of... extent of this natural disaster. There is, in a very short term, a mutual aid program that's sponsored by the U.S. Forest Service, and it's a program that I've been involved with on a national level since my days with the Army Corps of Engineers and doing response, storm hurricane response to Katrina down in New Orleans. And that's the Urban Forest Strike Team. And what that is, is that's arborist tree wardens like myself who have been trained to respond to communities that need inventory and assessment assistance following natural disasters. So I'm pleased to report that the Forest Service and the state DCR has granted our request to have a strike team response the week of July 9th. About three or four days, you know, it should go relatively quick. They'll be coming with tablets that are already set up and programmed with the data collection software that we need and networked into and connected, you know, compatible with our GIS software. So everything they collect will be easily downloaded into our own town GIS system. And then from that, we can then take a look at all the data once it's all been collected and set into our GIS system. But in the interim, using the rest of my current fiscal year budget to remove some trees and obviously July 1st starts my new fiscal year budget. Obviously, my year-to-year budget had nowhere near has the funds that are gonna be needed to address this on a townwide basis, but I will get started on the more busier and more important streets. But obviously, those are gonna be the more expensive streets to get done because of police details and development of lawns and what have you. So we'll have to haul the wood away and will be, you know, rather expensive to, you know, get some of these streets done. But that's our plan and then obviously, once we've analyzed the data at some appropriate future special town meeting, I'm sure I'll be putting forth an article to fund the rest of the needed, you know, again, we'll see what the number comes out. But my estimate right now is it could approach six figures to address the whole town.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Yeah, I've been noticing, like, like Tom has, driving down some of these streets, a lot of times you look at a tree and it looks nice and healthy. You look up at the branches on the top and they're, they're not very healthy. So some of this is gonna be bucket, you know, a lot of it's gonna be.
And again, we're, you know, I'm already reached out to National Grid, but clearly, as you all know, the gypsy moth infestation was not, you know, is somewhat of a regional-wide infestation, so we're not the only town in this particular circumstance. However, the damage in and of itself nowhere near reaches any kind of, you know, FEMA action or anything like that, unfortunately, because it's just tree damage for the most part.
What I'm worried about, what I'm worried about is as time goes on, it's more and more likely that these branches will start falling and it'll.
Oh, absolutely.
Serious hazard, so we.
You know, and again, there are a lot of, there are a lot of private property dead trees, too. And again, with the strike team, we're gonna try to, you know, work with National Grid and we're gonna try to capture some of that data also for National Grid and hopefully they'll come to the table and address some of this. But I, you know, I can tell you I can't see them addressing all of it, okay? As, as a, you know, this is just something beyond, I think, their, some of their budgeted capabilities. But, and again, this is why I'm bringing it up because obviously, people are calling. They're probably gonna start calling you because, you know, obviously, I can't take 1,000 dead trees down tomorrow. So somebody's gonna be first and somebody's gonna be last, okay? You know, there is a process of prioritizing the streets, obviously, those streets that are busier, that, you know, are school bus streets, that connect to other communities, you know, those will be the priority streets and those people that don't live on those kinda streets, you know, we'll get to them, but, you know, it's not gonna be the priority. And Mike, to your question, knock on wood, for those trees that died this, you know, didn't be flushed out this year, we're probably looking at about a three-year window before some of the limbs really start falling, but we did have some trees die last year, so we're already a year into that window, so to speak. But yeah, you're right, we can't just ignore it. It will not go away. We're gonna have to address these trees at some point. So again, like I said, I wanted to bring it up to let you know what we're doing, what my plan is, you know, that, and obviously, you know, you'll be given more information at once we've developed it and completed the survey and, and try to, you know, we'll be working obviously with Leon to make sure we, you know, put a good number to what our estimates might be.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, Tom.
Through you, Madam Chair.
Leon?
Before we let Tom leave, I think it would be a great suggestion. I remember last year, Tom, we talked about having a op-ed piece in the local paper describing the gypsy moth problem and that sort of thing. I think it would be helpful for the community if a similar type op-ed piece is in the local paper to talk about the infestation of, you know, and what this means moving forward. I think that it would help so that the selectmen don't get as many phone calls or emails as you were suggesting that they might if there was a wider understanding of the problem.
Sure.
And, and of course, if you were to do something like that, we could post that on the town's website, send it out through my blog and Twitter and that sort of thing. It's just a suggestion.
All right.
Clearly, it's something we can do, but I thought it was important to have this meeting tonight.
Oh, yeah, no, to update us.
You know, at least, you know, you know, that you guys are aware of what the plan is, right?
Before we read it.
Right.
And also before he leaves, Tom, we have under new business later in the evening, a acceptance of 1,000, $1,500 for the tree planting gift account?
Yes.
Can you just explain where that money is coming from and why?
So that's a check we received. A gentleman sought for public shade tree removals to construct a driveway on a parcel on Route 15. And under Section 8 of our non-hazard tree removal bylaw, the town is compensated for the loss of value of those shade trees. And so based on the bylaw and the number of trees, you know, that was the value that was established and agreed to with the property owner for compensation. And again, per the bylaw, the money is deposited into the tree planting gift account so that it's used to purchase and plant trees in other locations. If there are no, and in this case, there are no locations in that area, so that's why it's a gift. Other people, other options are that, you know, trees are planted in lieu of the, you know, the loss of, of the public shade tree value. So there's this one check and there will be presumably another check coming for the Doughty Road Tree Removal Hearing that was also just concluded at the Planning Board the other night because that was also part of the Scenic Roads Act.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Stay dry. At least the hail stopped. Okay, next on our agenda, we have the, hopefully, to sign a letter of support for the draft of the Open Space and Recreation Plan. Could our town planner please come down and open space? Carol Goodwin?
Madam Chair, in your mail slots, I've given you all a copy of a, of the draft Open Space and Recreation Plan. And I know you had it last week. I know you probably haven't had a chance to review every page. However, it is that time of the year where we need to start submitting our draft for the state's review. And typically, when that happens, one of the first parts of the process is a, is a letter of support from the Board of Selectmen. If the board was so willing to offer such a letter, I actually have one based upon the letter that you folks did back in 2011. Jean, is there anything that I missed there?
No, I was just going to give a little overview of the process, but yes, thank you for having us come in. And yes, we would appreciate a letter of support so we can send the Open Space Plan in for approval. Is it okay if I just give you a little synopsis?
Oh, yes, yes.
So our current Open Space and Recreation Plan expired in May 2018. We've been working on this most recent update since last fall. And I just wanted to go over a little bit of the benefits of an Open Space Plan for those that might be watching at home. So when we think of open space, we think of our protected conservation lands, but it's really much more than that. It's our lands for recreational opportunities, it's for groundwater protection and open space. We've tried to make this plan very inclusive and include all age groups and we had a great deal of citizen participation. I spoke at the senior center a couple of times. We had actually a survey, went to every household in town, and we had a very well-attended public forum. New feature this time, we had a photo contest and we actually had 28 residents submit photos of various open space and recreation lands and activities in town, and I think it was a great way to get new people involved. So you'll see that our goals are, some of them are very similar to our last plan, preserving open space for groundwater protection and conservation linkages and trails construction. But you'll also see a few things that came up. And one notable item that came up was the Streeter Point Beach that had been closed. So you'll see one of our goals in here is to ask the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator to maybe investigate that, to see if there's a possibility of the town leasing that for a public beach area. We found that although we're rich in lakes, we have very little public access, so if you're not living on the lake, you don't get to enjoy those. Another big thing we heard was dog park. I think if I heard dog park one more time, I was like, you know, everything we brought up, it was dog park, dog park. So people really seemed to want a dog park. And then we also found that, you know, in addition to the ballfields that people are talking about, there's some unmet recreational needs. We heard from a lot of younger families that they feel they lack a place for their, to bring their children during the day to play. So there's not a playground where you can go that's not at Burgess or not at the recreation area. So the young moms and dads felt there, there just wasn't anywhere to bring their toddlers, for instance, during the daytime to get them out in some fresh air and some activities. So you'll see, we've incorporated a lot of those goals. We've recommended that, as was discussed this evening, that the Recreation Committee kind of regroup and rethink about the direction that they're going. The survey results were overwhelming that people want to see the fields, but I think Ms. Jimis was right that, you know, some people were concerned about the price tag. So we have a lot of smaller goals and some very lofty goals. The plan is now valid for seven years, once it gets approved. And we spent a great deal of time on it. I hope that you found it thorough. I don't know if anyone had any questions or concerns that we could answer. And I guess finally, I'd just like to thank everyone that participated. I'd like to thank Ms. DeCoursey for, she really spent a lot of time updating Chapter 5, which is all the town land. She did a lot of research. We really brought that up to date. And the committee worked very hard as well. We were meeting almost on a weekly basis at time, at least one member of the committee coming in and working with myself. So did I miss anything that you wanted to add?
I just wanna add a little bit. Our town planner, Jean Barone, and her assistant, Rebecca DeCoursey, working with the Open Space Committee, have produced an informative plan. Mapping, oh, sorry, mapping where we've been and what options are available for the future. And I really encourage all of you to read it and then we, and we will be back and to hear your input, too, when we come before you, like, when we were trying to plan for the future, like with the Streeter Beach project, because we heard, I heard that even at town meeting, the people behind me were saying, we need Streeter Beach, you know, there's no place for children to swim.
No.
Other than, you know, and, and they thought the water flows there, so it's, it's a natural place. I, so the benefits we receive from having an open space and a recreation plan are amplified because of our town employees' efforts, such as grants from the state and federal agencies, better ratings, and respect, because we always do our homework, thanks to Jean and many of our town employees. And this extra caring by our boards and staff resulted in a much higher quality of life for all of us. And it is always a team effort. I mean, the boards really work really well with the people who are leading us, so, so we just, again, thank you, Jean and Rebecca.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board?
Make a motion to.
I just, I just wanted to say, when I got to the goals and objectives and saw the very first thing on there, Streeter Beach, I went, yes! That was, that was really, you did a really, really good job. You know, there's, there's not much I can say. I noticed on page 26, the, there's a infrastructure map with showing the sewers.
We were talking about that. We have corrections to make. We know that one already.
I don't wanna mention what area, but it could be a sewer spot.
No, I know. No, we have corrections to make. I called about that, too.
I don't want anybody looking at that, getting excited about that thing. And, but, yeah, there were a couple of charts in here that said, said 2005 data and it looked like current data.
Okay, thank you. We'll go back there.
So if you could look, you know, they said 2005, but it looked current to me, so.
We did update, maybe we just missed a heading or two.
Yeah, it might have been a heading or two.
We've been trying to correct it, but now we have the hard copy, too, which makes it easier for someone like me, too.
You know, the census data and stuff, 2010 makes sense, but 2005 didn't make sense, so.
Now, you're still updating and correcting? I mean, there's a few.
Well, we thought we were, we thought we were done, but we'll go through again and see what we missed.
Sometimes the maps are difficult, too.
Yeah, and particularly, they're difficult here because they're black and white.
Yeah.
But there's just a few typos, like Quocet spelled two different ways on the same page.
Okay.
The first one, I think page forty, page 43.
Okay, thank you.
First one is misspelled, second one is correct.
Okay.
I mean, I have a few others. I can give them to you later. Once a teacher, always a teacher.
Oh, I know, things jump out sometimes.
I thought, I, I thought I did well with having Lisa proofread everything. She's.
She's on our committee. She really knows a lot.
Yeah, but no, most times, people read what they think is there.
Right, and you read it so many times.
You don't see it.
Exactly.
I have a few more, but I can drop in.
That'd be great. I'll take.
Nobody wants to hear about comments.
Anyone's corrections are, I would gladly take.
The overuse of a comment.
One, one thing that got in there, I couldn't believe was in there, is you mentioned under the, at the, talking about the senior center, you mentioned the Memory Cafe.
Yeah, so.
And CMRPC is just so excited about that Memory Cafe.
Right.
Went to their quarterly meeting last week and they're like, wow, that's cool.
Yeah, so it was kind of interesting when we devised the survey question. So we worked with Central Mass Regional Planning Commission on the survey and we knew that one of the goals of the Board of Selectmen was the dementia welcoming community. I'm sorry if I'm not using the right terms. So we thought it important to include questions that were pertaining to the older population. So we included the Memory Cafe question, and it ranked quite low and I think probably a lot of people didn't know what the Memory Cafe was. So we were concluding this process and Huamitron from CMRPC, who worked with us on the survey, have to give her a lot of credit because she said, hey, there's this grant available and I think the senior center may be able to receive a grant for the Memory Cafe. So she worked with Heather to obtain that grant and I'm happy to say they did receive it, so.
Yeah, well, it's a, it's a really good purposed grant.
Okay, I think Priscilla's ready to make a motion. They're just having a coffee chat right now.
I just have one question. So I, I agree with the beach as well as the dog park. That was one of the advocates at the OSV that wanted the dog park. And maybe this is a better question for trails more than open space, but until we have a dog park, did we ever consider having a trail that's designated for off-leash?
Yeah.
And then you, you can, oh, you do?
That's in the plan as well.
Oh, okay, I didn't see that.
Either dog park or dog-friendly segment of trail.
Okay.
So that's something that we've, we've added into the goals and assigned to the Trails Committee to review, so.
Beautiful, 'cause I have a misbehaved dog that needs to run free. I can't put him on a leash and I can't let him go leashless because I follow our town. But that would be good if there was a trail that you can go off-leash.
That's why you're running so much.
Yeah, that's why I run. It's my midlife crisis.
Okay, thank you both for coming in.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I think you, did you vote?
No, you didn't make it.
We didn't make a motion yet.
Oh, you never got it.
Yeah, no.
Priscilla's been trying to get that in.
They keep interrupting. Anyways, I make a motion that the Board of Selectmen sign a letter of support to the state for the update, the Open Space Plan.
Is there a second?
I second that.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five to nothing.
Really nice job.
Madam Chair, I have a draft letter going around. Do you, you don't need that tonight, right?
Although it seems I have a few more typos to clean up, so.
Oh, yeah, but no, you said that.
Next week, I thought you'd get it sent in this week if we couldn't. We know the state's going to have other amendments.
You know.
Oh, yeah.
And Melissa Cryan is still there?
Yes, she is.
I'll give you a copy. Of course, I remember when you used to have it signed blue.
Yes, instead of black?
Yeah, because black could look like, could just be poppy. But now they want things in black, though. Oh, this pen's broken.
I guess I could have sat down and waited and see. I think it's kind of past.
Hopefully.
It's gone.
Hopefully.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, the next item on the agenda is a authorization for emergency repairs to a Brookfield Road building. We had a insurance, our insurance company had told us that there was some exterior work that needed to be done in order for it to be insured. We expected that the quote would come in somewhere between $3,000 and $4,000. However, Nelson was able to get us a quote from Bill's Home Improvement of Webster for $2740, and I would ask the Board of Selectmen to authorize the project to move forward.
Any questions? Someone willing to make a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Madam Chair, I would ask the Board of Selectmen to hold their annual vote to fund five hours of the Conservation Department's Administrative Assistance Salary from the Wellands Protection Amount, Protection Fund, in the amount of $4,433.
Questions?
Well, I, this is actually for 260 hours, five hours per week?
Yes.
Okay.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, five to nothing, Rebecca.
I would ask the Board of Selectmen to accept the resignation of Jamie Rice, who is the Board of Health's Health Inspector.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
I would ask the Board of Selectmen to accept the resignation of Colleen King as Administrative Assistant to the Town Administrator and Board of Selectmen.
Is there a motion?
So moved with regret.
Is there a second?
Second with regret.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Five to nothing, Rebecca.
Madam Chair, in your packet, you had the employment agreement between the town and Tom Ford, the police chief. I was asked to bring it back to the Board of Selectmen at your last meeting of the fiscal year. That meeting is today, and if the Board of Selectmen is so willing, I would ask that the Board of Selectmen accept the police chief's contract as written.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, okay.
No, you go ahead, I'm fine.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
I'm just going to abstain. I wasn't here for the negotiation, pardon.
Oops. Okay.
I'm passing out the contract for your signatures. Priscilla, I'll get it from you at the end.
Yeah, okay. We had voted in executive session, but it does have to be voted in public session also.
Do we have a list of who he's recommending?
Yes, it was on your table tonight.
Yeah, that's what I thought, but I can't find it.
Did you miss, are you missing something?
I just can't find your list of who you were recommending.
Oh, it should have been on your seat, or your table.
Yeah, there's a note.
On your emails, too.
I know the email, but I don't print that out. You have another one?
Yep, we have an extra right here. Madam Chair, the next item is...
I just found it.
She found it.
Sorry.
Madam Chair, the next item is, Town Council has forwarded to us the Acorn Lane easements. As you can see from the email, the easements are all set, and the signed easements are in your agenda package. She has asked for the Board of Selectmen to sign the acceptance of the easements on the last page and return it to her for proper recording.
Okay, is there a motion to sign the...
Yeah, I would like to, to, I, I came to, I, a couple months ago, I brought, brought to the attention of the Town Administrator that at least one of the house lots on, on Acorn Lane had not, they had not reserved the rights to the street. I think, I think at least it was three Acorn, and there might have been one or two other homeowners that didn't, haven't released the easement. So I think it would be not proper for the Board of Selectmen to sign this if, if there are other people on the street that would have to sign the deed to the easements.
Keon?
Well, I don't remember you mentioning that to me.
Well, there's a...
But, but having said that, you have one, you have two choices you can make. One would be to put this off to a future meeting, which is perfectly fine, or number two, you can sign it with the understanding that it would not be released to the other, to the other party until such time as the final easements have been released. Whatever the Board of Selectmen chooses to do is fine with me.
Okay, well, Mike's along with the questions, so Mike, what would you prefer?
Well, I'm happy either way, so. Yeah, I would, you know, we should have the, the other party's signature on, on the original document, or we could take it by eminent domain like we have to do in another, another street acceptance that we have. So I would prefer to hold off to another meeting so that we can get clarification on, on the, the issue.
Okay. So done.
That's fine with me. In your agenda package, you have a letter from the Sturbridge Farmers Market, which is beginning, starting June 24th. The Sturbridge Farmers Market Committee is asking if the Board of Selectmen would like to have the first table at the, Community Table, they're calling it, at the initial Farmers Market. It will give you an opportunity to greet the residents of the town, if you folks are able, willing. We could also do it at another time if it would be better, but I, I offer to bring it to the committee's attention, to the board's attention here tonight, so.
Discussion from the board?
I guess the question would be whether or not the, enough members of the Board of Selectmen would be available for Sunday, June 24th, from 10 to 2.
I'm not, no, I don't. Because the thing is, during Harvest Festival, the town had a table...
We do.
...with information and input survey. The Farmers Market, though, people are going to come to buy their tomatoes and leave. I don't really think they're going to be interested in listening to us, because a lot of them won't be town people. I know they had the same discussion at the Planning Board meeting, too. I mean...
Harvest Festival's different.
Yeah, it's, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, I mean... Mike?
I don't have any opinion one way or another.
You're just going to go, yeah, just going to go buy your apples.
I'm just going to go buy my apples. I'm not going to buy any, any wine or cider.
You can't.
Or cider. I know.
We're very prejudicial on that one.
Well, I was a little disappointed, but we didn't have an offer for wine, we had an offer for cider.
Cider. I, I agree, and it's discriminatory because... It is because it is a farm product, and we're letting the other farm products in, but not that one, so.
So, to be fair, so is marijuana.
Assume a by-pot.
Did you vote against it? Was it split vote?
Mary, you were here, you spearheaded it.
Yeah, I know, but didn't you, I agree that I didn't want it.
We just put it off.
Right, but you voted in favor of putting it off.
Well, because I knew what the count was.
Wait, I'm like, did I miss something? Wasn't it a 5-0 vote?
I'm not always contrary.
Yes, it was.
Just most of the time.
Well, here in the discussion of the board, I'm happy to just let them know, thank you, but we can't do it this week.
We can't get people to listen to us on Mondays, you know.
Next item on the agenda is the annual appointments and reappointments of town employees and the boards and committees. In your package, I've given to you a memo from me with all of the employees and boards of committee appointments for fiscal year 2019.
Okay, now, Chase, you haven't gone through this. What we usually do is, I read the position, and the name, and the term, and if anyone has a question, a concern, or an unfavorable vote, just say "hold."
Okay.
And then the ones that there's no question on, we'll vote approval altogether. Okay, so Wire Inspector, three-year term. Clyde Gagnon, Public Works, three-year term. Mark Argello, Operating, Operations Manager. Benjamin Burlingame. Kimberly Welton-Pulsofer, Police Department, three-year term. Hillary Dado. Edward Page, Jr., Animal Control Officer, three years. Michelle Connis, Fire Department, three-year term. Full-time Personnel, Sean Moynah. Jennifer Ash. Part-time Personnel, Brian Swanda. Robert Moynah. Town Council, one year. KP Law. Tree Warden, three-year appointment. Tom Chamberlain. Safety Committee, those were employees, these are now committees and commissions. Safety Committee, three-year term. Frank McNeil. Conservation Commission, three-year term. Ed Goodwin. Stephen Chidester. Council on Aging, three-year term. Susan Grandone. Kenneth White. Gladys Santelli. Open Space, three-year term. Carol Goodwin. Alyssa Gelfid. Lynn Peterson. There's still two vacancies. Community Preservation Committee, three-year term. Penny Dumas. Heather Hart. Design Review Committee, three-year term. Christian Castendike. Trails Committee, three-year term. Brandon Goodwin. David Verdenes. Associates, Associate. Tom Chamberlain, Associate. Darcy Foley. Sturbridge Tourist Association, three-year term. Tom Chamberlain. Nicholas Salvador. Historical Commission, three...
Hold, hold on, STA?
Both of them, or?
Hold STA, yes, just hold it.
Historical Commission, three-year term. Barbara Surch. Master Plan Implementation Committee, three-year term. Sandra Gibson Quigley. There's a vacancy on that. LEPC, three-year term. John Dignan. Also Board of Registries. Now, this is, this does not come from the Town Administrator. The Board of Selectmen is responsible for appointing them. Usually what happens is the Republican Committee and the Democrat Committee put names forward, and they did that to the town clerk, and she passed them on, but it's strictly our appointment. So three-year term. Susan Murphy. Tim Bodzly. Okay.
And Cheryl Creeden, until 2019.
Oh, she's down in the writing, thank you. And Cheryl Creeden.
I would also point out, go ahead.
That's to finish a term, right?
For Doreen Burbine, and I would ask the Board of Selectmen...
Yeah, and then next year, she'll...
So I will ask the Board of Selectmen to accept a resignation.
Okay, why don't we do that now? Is someone willing to make the motion?
Something a resignation from?
Doreen Burbine.
Ah, okay.
She's moving out of town.
Okay.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, so, Registries, Susan Murphy. Tim Bodzly. Cheryl Creeden. Personnel Classification and Policy Committee, three-year appointment. Frank McNeil. Reed Hillman. Joan Chamberlain. Joni Light. Planning Board Appointment, Frank McNeil. Penny Dumas.
Hold.
Okay, so that's it, so anything...
And Michael.
Michael, cheers.
His home, did you even say his name?
No, he's not.
No, you got to read it.
He's not.
I know, but you, she still, she still has to read it.
Yeah.
I didn't hear her read his name.
No, I didn't, because...
He's not part of the nomination.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
My top three, I understand.
No, the two.
Right, I get it. I get it, I'm sorry.
Okay, it's a little confusing, because there's a lot of...
The way he presented it is...
Text. Okay, so is your motion to appoint all those not under a hold?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, let's go back to the first hold, which was the STA.
That was my hold. I have a question. I believe the memo says that all of the boards and committees had no candidates except the incumbents. No one put in for STA at any point in time, other than these two people? Are they both, let me ask this, are they both resident fill-ins?
Yes.
They are. No other residents put in for STA?
Not this time, but you may remember, a few months ago, we were seeking STA members, and at that point, Nicholas Salvador was, was named to fill the vacancy, and now his reappointment comes up, so he's currently a member of STA. So this, this most recent search, I had no other candidates for any of the positions.
For this time around, okay.
But I think Nicholas Salvador, I want to say, was appointed three, maybe it was four months ago? I think it was around the first of the, right after the first of the year. Maybe three or four months, five, four months ago.
Okay. You're all set, then? Anyone else have a question on that? Okay, is there a motion, then, to approve those for the STA?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, then the next hold is Planning Board, Frank McNeil.
I released that hold. I just actually put it on Planning Board, but I released the hold on Frank McNeil.
Okay, that leaves the hold on Penny Dumas.
Yes.
Should we vote in Frank, then?
Oh, yes.
I'll make a motion to appoint Frank McNeil to the Planning Board.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, Penny Dumas?
I sustain my hold there.
Well, okay, we're up to that, sorry.
Can I, okay. First of all, I, I commend anyone who puts their time into our community in any and all positions, because it is a commitment, and they make the commitment, and they do it in, in the best way that they know. However, I do believe the fact that we've had so many applicants is indicative of the
fact that the town wants change. And I had mentioned before that the Sturbridge Mass community keeps on speaking to change on some of the boards for different opinions, a different view, a different perspective, sort of like outside-the-box kind of concept. And I think that the community has clearly stated this, and it's represented in the fact that there are that many applicants this time around. And I also think that's a wonderful thing, because we sit here often, and we say, "Nobody applies, nobody applies, how do we get people to apply?" And this time here, we had a great turnout, and I think that's a good piece. I just can't reappoint at this point in time, Ms. Dumas. And my reasons are that she has been against some of the projects that the community has wanted, whether it's the cinema, or whether it was Panera, the blue light controversy. All these things don't lend themselves well at this point. In addition, an iconic establishment such as the Public House being given 12 conditions on their new building, and yet a 13th had to be added. Those of us who were present saw the frustration on these businesses. At a business breakfast where the town administrator was present at Rapskalian, I raised a question to him, because I had spoken to the Building Commissioner about the blue lights, and I said, "They're gonna come back. We need to resolve this in the best way for the community." And the town administrator assured me that that was a done deal, because the Building Commissioner had given his ruling. However, that very evening, it came back again. I don't think that lends itself well to any board. When we sit on any of these boards, they're not about our personal likes and dislikes. If a developer meets the needs, it meets the bylaws, it meets conservation restrictions, it meets wetland restrictions, it meets everything, then I don't see why projects get held up. And I don't feel that any developer should be told, "Go back and start from scratch," after the thousands of dollars that had been invested. The rewriting of the zoning bylaws, I think, is also an important piece that needs new blood. That's one of the areas that residents are constantly speaking about, as are businesses. Because of what I've heard from residents, because of what I've heard from many of them, I'm gonna honor their request. And I will not support this nominee at this point in time, because the residents have spoken, and they've asked for change. And I'm gonna honor this. And we also, again, have had so many applicants, what message do we send if we're not gonna accept some kind of an option for change? I don't, I know that we have six or eight other applicants. We haven't seen their credentials. So for me to say that this is the most qualified, I honestly can't at this point, because I haven't seen the other credentials. Experience doesn't always give qualification. And so my vote will be no.
Okay, Priscilla, just to address a few points. We did have a lot of applications, but I give, I believe that was partly because there was a definite resignation on that committee. There was a definite opening with the chairman resigning. It is up to the town administrator to go through credentials, to present the best qualified person to the board for our yea or nay. I have also had difference of opinion with Ms. Dumas through the years. However, Penny asks questions. Penny has never delayed a project that it didn't get through. She may ask some tough questions and get other things added to it, but I think it's a better project for it. The blue lights, that came up after. I mean, that was a matter of opinion, and it was such a big ado about it, because the press, Mr. Seaman, had come to the meeting, the Planning Board meeting, and reported that. You're here tonight because of the appointment on that. Otherwise, we never see the press. I believe.
He's always here.
You're not always here. Okay, Greg, just.
What, I haven't been here before?
No, no, not recently.
I was here at a town meeting. I was here.
Craig, look, I'm not gonna have a debate with you. Let me just.
You're getting falsehoods.
I'm not. It was in the paper, so it blew up. Did we look silly? Yes. But Penny Dumas, excuse me. Penny Dumas has experience, and particularly with the chairman, who has resigned, well, retired from the position. We need somebody with that experience. Priscilla points out that going through the bylaws and updating them, fine, but you need to know the bylaws we have now. So, as many disagreements of opinion that I have had with Ms. Dumas through the years, I am going to support her. Chase?
I cannot agree with the town administrator's decision. If we were voting on experience alone, I would not be sitting in this seat. We posted these positions to the town, and our overwhelming amount of residents applied. I applaud the residents that applied. This is because many people want change. Our town administrator cited he wanted to reappoint Penny Dumas for experience reasons. Currently on that board sits Dr. Sue Waters, Russell Chamberlain, Jim Cuniff, Heather Hart, and Charlie Blanchard. If you ask me, between those members, there's a wealth of knowledge and experience. What is lacking is youth and new blood. I urge my fellow board members to vote in a guy like Mike Chisholm, who is a Boston College grad with a master's, raising a young family in town who stepped up to the plate. I call for a change at this position.
Chase, can I just, we can only vote on what's presented. We can only vote on the candidates that are presented to us. We can't pick and choose. Okay, Mike? I'm looking at what Chase wants to.
Then, you know, they put this, Michael, if we're only appointing two positions, then why do we have a third here with this great-looking resume? I mean, it's like, it's a tease.
I can answer.
Town administrator.
So, you have to know that the charter requires me, when there is an opening, and there's multiple candidates, I'm required by the charter to present three names of candidates. So what I did was I looked at all the six candidates that stepped forward, and I chose that top three candidates. And I liked Michael Chisholm a lot. I thought that he was a very good candidate. I thought that he came well-prepared. And as I said to Michael in his interview, I have never met an individual for an opening on a board that campaigned for the position as he had. He really expressed a desire.
It's impressive.
I liked him very much.
Mike?
Well, I believe that there is a need for a new point of view on the Planning Board. You know, I know Penny Dumas has put a lot of effort in the last 10 years on the Planning Board, and I really appreciate everything she's done. But, you know, in the past, when we've had the opportunity for somebody new on a board, I've always voted in favor of giving somebody new a chance. And so I would be in favor of, you know, getting some new blood on the Planning Board. The town, the Board of Selectmen has changed considerably over the last five years, and I think the Planning Board has been changing over the last five years. And I think we should be reflecting changes on the Planning Board as well.
Mary?
Okay, well, when you're the last one, it seems that we know how this vote's going. But, you know, I just want to say for the record, because I believe in transparency, I did receive two emails today. One from a resident who would like fresh ideas, talks about obstructing the development of the Holiday Inn with the blue lights. And then another one, who was a candidate, he disclosed it. I thought it was very professional. He was not selected. And he also disagreed with the stance of Penny. Now, having said that, our town administrator is the appointing authority. We are subject to our approval. So the initial look is our town administrator under our charter. If we wanted to make the Board of Selectmen the appointing authority, we could change our charter. As far as Penny goes, in my years of sitting on the board, other than today, and I'm sure other, you know, we all have different constituents that speak with us, but I welcome everybody to speak with me directly on my email or my cell. I'd never received any emails indicating that the person that is being recommended by our town administrator was unprofessional, or not courteous, or didn't do her homework, or anything. And we've had a lot of projects, I'm gonna put the, I see the owner of the Holiday Inn Express, so I'm gonna put that one on hold for a minute. But, you know, we've had CVS, I never got any emails from anybody over CVS. Restaurants have altered their seating, they've had outside patios. We have Baba Sushi that totally revamped theirs. And this was the first time that I ever, in all my years sitting here, had any negative feedback. I also got a phone call for somebody supporting her, but I also don't agree with Penny on everything. I think she has very good judgment sometimes. This last project, this resident was concerned about the Holiday Inn. I think the Holiday Inn Express, state for the record, came out beautifully. I think the blue lights are absolutely ideal on a contemporary building like that. I'm not sure I'd want blue lights in the Public House, but I think it's a great gateway. I had a tour of it, and I think it's just a beautiful building, and I think it's an asset. Having said that, though, we are gonna have different opinions. I can't not vote in favor of somebody who has the expertise, has given years of her time, does her homework, is always polite, professional, and based on one project, and based on no negative feedback whatsoever. I think that really has a chilling effect on residents being willing to step forward to volunteer their time, if we're just going to not approve of somebody because we disagree politically with them. I want give and take on the Planning Board. And I think the town of Sturbridge has some beautiful buildings, and I think it's only one vote, there's a balance, there's a give and take. And I would support Penny, and I would support our town administrator's recommendation on that. And I welcome the fact that we have other people willing to step up. I think that's great. But I also agree with our chair. I don't think the number of applicants is indicative that we just want change. I think it's people that want to get involved in planning, and we have an opening where the chair is stepping down after serving decades on that board. So I think.
Um, excuse me, this is, this is a board, this is a public meeting, not a public hearing.
So I just, absent something really egregious, I just don't see why I would not support our town administrator's professional recommendation.
I have no problem with new people applying for positions, but in this case, I do firmly believe that the town administrator has put forward, in his judgment, the best candidates. And those emails, I believe, all the board got them. And there was a comment.
I did not receive any.
You didn't?
No, I did not.
Okay. Well, there was a comment in there that Penny and some others delayed, obstructed the building of the Holiday Inn because of the blue lights. And I responded to that, just to clarify it. That building was up and running before the issue of the blue lights came about. Excuse me.
I know, I apologize.
Okay, no, 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 that's.
That was me.
Okay, well, it's nice.
I think that it just comes down to.
It's nice to me. Excuse me. No, we're not having input from the audience. Thank you. The, Penny raises things, and Priscilla pointed out the 13 conditions. She's one member. It's the entire Board, Planning Board, that makes the final decision. Penny has not been a one-vote, one-decision person. She may have different opinions than some of the other members, but it's a vote by the seven members on the Planning Board.
Priscilla?
I, the town administrator had sent an email to me. I'd asked a question on something, and he had said, "We'll probably talk this weekend after I do my interviews with the Planning Board." I wish we had done that. I wish that you had reached out to all of us individually and asked our feel, because I'm gonna tell you, I'm not comfortable making the statements I've made. I make them because I believe them. I make them because the community has asked for this. But I don't think any resident who gives of their time should have to endure this discussion right now. I just don't. And I know we've been polled at other times for different things. I wish we had been polled this time, so that perhaps you'd have a feel, and maybe a different recommendation could have been made, and we wouldn't be having this discussion.
Can I just address Priscilla's point? That's, Priscilla, though, getting down to the point of the selectmen having too much say in an appointment.
We don't have any, otherwise.
We do. We have yea or nay, based on recommendation from the town administrator. He does not need our input beforehand. Mary?
Okay, I, I'm not the one, excuse me, though, before you start.
Sure.
I'm not the one that asked him to call me. He's the one who put in an email, an email, "We'll probably talk this weekend after I finish my interviews." That's the reason I bring it up. I would not have brought it up had I not gotten that. And I was anticipating it and hoping for it, so that this wouldn't be happening.
Mary?
Okay, I just want to address that, because, you know, with all due respect, that's not transparency. Transparency is, if we don't believe in something, here's the place to do it. Our town administrator, under the charter, is the appointing authority. We approve. I would not like, if all of us were polled, to see how we vote on something, and then put it on our town administrator, not to come forward with it. That's going through the back door. I commend Penny and her commitment to the town for being willing to leave her name in and offer her services, knowing full well it could be a thumbs up or thumbs down. I do not want to do it quietly, where the vote is known in advance, and then he puts forward somebody else's name, when that's not the person that he felt was the most qualified. That is not transparency, and I would not support that type of approach.
Okay, is there, no, excuse me, Mr. Patel, this is a public meeting, which means a public can come and listen. It's not a public hearing where we take input from the audience. This is strictly a discussion and vote of the Board of Selectmen. Okay? No, Jay, excuse me, no. Okay, is somebody?
I'll be willing to make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the appointment of Frank McNeil and Penny Dumas to the Planning Board.
Already approved Frank McNeil.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, okay, sorry. I'm gonna make a motion that we approve Penny Dumas to the Planning Board, as recommended by our town administrator.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor of that motion? All opposed? Motion's defeated.
Madam Chair, given the fact that I have no candidate for the, the vacancy hadn't been filled, I would like to bring forward the name of Michael Chisholm to fill the vacancy on the Planning Board.
I, I make a motion.
Well, wait a minute. We need a motion to not appoint, because the motion to appoint didn't pass. So we need a motion to not.
I don't know if I agree with that, because my recommendation was to.
Yeah, but we've done it before that way, just to cover.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, Mary?
And I'm gonna defer to you on this. You don't, he's number three, you don't want to go back to your others and relook?
No, I was, I mentioned before that it was the town charter, it's actually the town bylaws, I misspoke. I was, I liked Michael Chisholm very much. He really did a nice job of presenting himself. I think he would get along quite well with the other members of the Planning Board. He does come with some great education background, as Mr. Kavinsky had mentioned earlier. He does have a master's degree in business administration. He has experience in healthcare retail sales, which, as I mentioned in my memo, would actually be an interesting aspect to our Planning Board as well. I think he has some good questions when we met with him, and I really, I think very highly of him, and I would be comfortable, and I think he would be a good candidate for the Planning Board.
Okay, before that, we.
We have to vote to not.
Well, we have done that. When there's been a recommendation, and that didn't pass, then we voted to not approve the recommendation.
But doesn't the no vote do that?
Well, it does, but it's just covering both bases.
Okay, so you need a motion to not approve?
To not approve.
Okay, so I make a motion to not approve of the recommendation for the Planning Board of Penny Dumas.
Okay, is there a second?
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor of that motion? All opposed? Okay, three, two. Okay, now.
Can I make a motion to appoint Michael Chisholm to the Planning Board?
Second?
If that's a recommendation from.
It is.
It is, because we're reading all of this thing.
Make sure it's correct. Is there any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I'm abstaining, only because I didn't like the process. Okay, next.
Madam Chair, I'd ask the Board of Selectmen to accept the IOD claim found in your agenda package.
Okay, is there any questions? Is there a motion? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay.
I would respectfully ask that the Selectmen authorize the town administrator to carry over 40.5 hours of vacation time from this fiscal year.
Okay, is there any questions from the board? It's in his contract that that may occur if the board approves. Is there a motion then to approve the carryover?
Motion to approve the carryover.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, five to nothing.
Madam Chair, I have no other business before the board.
Okay, next we have all the business. Priscilla?
I do. I want to commend our Building Commissioner, Nelson Burlingame, for finally getting the owner to get that building down at the end of fiscal year.[1769.02] And I commend him for his perseverance, and how hard he worked at it, and for his success. So please pass to, I'm asking the town administrator to please pass that statement on to Mr. Burlingame.
I, I've done that already, but I'm happy to do it more formally on behalf of the board, so yes, I'll be happy to do that.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else, Priscilla?
I'm going to ask that, yeah, one more thing. That we, that we consider next years, that we think about it for next year, put it out out there now, that we do the booklet back the way we used to do with the salaries and all. And I understand the, to have the liberty to move the monies, I get that. But perhaps a warrant article could answer that piece.
Well, Leon had mentioned he has an idea on what to do, and we'll get back to that.
Yeah, the finance director, I can answer it briefly. The finance director and I have been talking about this, and there is a neighboring town that actually does that, where they list the salaries individually, yet the motion that's made at town meeting is only voting the bottom lines, which will give us all the flexibility we need, plus it gives the transparency that you folks have asked for. So I think that we're going to work on something a little bit differently. I know it's a little premature to be talking about 2020's fiscal budget, but yeah, we actually think we have a good solution to that.
That's it.
Thanks, Priscilla.
Thank you.
Chase?
I have no other business.
Mike, any old?
No old.
Sounds ominous. Mary?
Old business?
No.
And I have none. New, Priscilla?
Do you think we could keep Rebecca?
No.
I didn't ask you. It's not a public meeting.
Nothing from the audience. We were told-
You can't speak from the audience.
We were told explicitly, no.
Wait, we haven't seen her minutes yet, so let's start right there.
This is true.
We can write them up and see if you want to keep me.
Okay.
How's that, bud?
I'll let you know tomorrow. No, I have no other business.
Chase, new?
No, no.
Mike, new?
No.
No. You sounded like you did. Mary, new?
No.
No, no.
And I have no new.
Madam Chair, I have new. I'd ask the Board of Selectmen to accept a donation of $1,500 to the Sturbridge Tree Planting Gift Account on behalf of Thirty Swift LLC.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Any discussion, then? All in favor? Four in favor, one abstention?
I cut the trees, so I-
You're not supposed to, this isn't confession. Hey, transparency, come on.
But he's transparent. Okay, correspondence.
Correspondence dated June 18, 2018, May 24, from the Commonwealth of Mass Executive Office for Administration and Finance. Commonwealth search for leased space. Request for RFP approximately 8, 8,200 square feet of usable area. The deadline is June 13 at 2:00 p.m. to submit bids. May 22, Jewel Environmental Corp., permanent solution statement report for I-90 East, just past exit nine, pursuant to 310 Code of Mass Regs Massachusetts contingency plan. Communities in which a disposal site is located or those likely to be affected shall be notified of the availability of solution. May 24, Sturbridge Planning Board and Sturbridge Tree Warden, notice of a public hearing. There's an application for tree and stone wall removal on Doughty Road, held on Tuesday, June 12, at Center Office Building. June 1, Town of Sturbridge Conservation Commission, notice of intent, notification to a butters, NOI by RV Management Services at 30 River Road concerning Sturbridge for aquatic vegetation control and wetland boundary verification. June 1, Department of Environmental Protection, application for corrective action design, E-slope closure project, final permit on behalf of Southbridge Recycling and Disposal Park.
Okay, any other correspondence from anybody? Okay, next we have approval of minutes, May 21.
I have a couple.
Mary?
I have a couple edits. On page two, halfway down that first paragraph, M. Dowling stated that the grandfathered language the Jalbots referred to in their complaint has not been provided to the Board of Selectmen and is not in the office files, before the period insert, nor is there any such language in our doc regulations. Nor is there any such language in our doc regulations. And then on page three, after the question mark, M. Dowling asked Chief Ford about when a meeting is taking place at the Superintensive Schools, I'm sorry, before the question mark, and whether we can be, quote, cautious, don't quote that, I'm sorry, and whether we can be cautiously optimistic that an SRO will be in place by the new school year. Insert the sentence, Chief Ford responded that he is cautiously optimistic. So again, we're adding, and whether we can be cautiously optimistic that an SRO will be in place by the new school year. Chief Ford responded that he is cautiously optimistic.
In that same paragraph-
One second. Sorry, go ahead.
It continues, the recommended approach is that the resource officer should be a Sturbridge resident, not resident, I believe, officer, and will work with surrounding communities to start identifying regional elementary school age students who will move on to TR.
Yep.
HS. Anyone else?
On page one, under public announcements, I made an announcement about John Gendron, but I didn't say he was a prominent resident, so scratch that of Sturbridge. I said was on the honor roll in front of the Sturbridge Town Hall.
Okay, anyone else? Is there a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, now it says June 4, but I don't, I have those.
In the back of the-
Yeah, it's double sided.
Back.
Oh.
Nice.
Well, it was funny, because I said-
We save paper in this town.
Well, right. It was, I said it was such a short meeting that, okay, it won't take a second.
Looks good to me.
Yep. Motion to-
Somebody want a motion, Priscilla?
Motion to accept, June 4, 2018?
As read. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Madam Chair, that's the end. Okay. We don't have citizens-
It's on the other side.
Citizens Forum?
Citizens Forum. Any citizen?
Now, now's everyone's chance.
Nobody wants to talk. Everybody wanted to talk before. Could you come up to the microphone, please?
I have two comments. When county town plan requires a landscape architect plan submitted, and Penny dissected that plan the way she does, it's not correct. And second thing, my Panera building, after I put nice design, she said that's not what I want, start from the scratch. That's delay. So I just want to correct that she has delayed my project. That's what I want to say.
Well, Jay, I don't want to argue, but a lot of things delay a lot of projects, so, and it's not just one person.
I agree, but that was the only member of the board says, if you have to start from the scratch, go ahead and start from the scratch. That was the comment. Isn't Telegram and Gazzetta has that comment? Return, Report has that comment? But I just want to make sure that the statement is correct.
Jay, if it was a comment, that's fine, but it wasn't a vote by the board. Was it a motion?
Well, yeah, she delayed it.
Yeah, but did she make a motion to start the project over? It was-
Oh, yes, she did. I have to come with totally different design. Because money to that-
Yeah, but it wasn't, but Jay, that's what I had pointed out. It wasn't just Ms. Dumas, it's a board vote, if it was a vote at that time. Okay? No, we're not going to debate, okay?
I agree. I just wanted to come and say on the record again, that she started it. Everybody has praised CVS building, that's why I bring the CVS building, because that was so proud building in this town. I copied that building. And she came in, and the very first opening thing, she says, "You have to start from the scratch." And I had to start from the scratch.
Only if it was a board decision, not a Penny decision. There's a difference.
It certainly looks awesome now, though.
I understand that. No, that wasn't, that wasn't the Holiday Inn Express. Holiday Inn Express was always my gateway district. I had promised this town that I'd do the gateway district, and I delivered the gateway district. It's the treatment that I got as a developer. When public house has been known for the, for the landscaping in the whole area, not in Sturbridge, you have to go back and look at those hearing houses, characterize and chastise public house landscaping for a public, public-
Jay, we're not here really to extend the conversation on that, okay?
I understand that. You want a developer who is reasonable developer like me to come and do project in town, you need members who understand, okay, can you do this? Yeah, we can do that. But no, you have to start from the scratch? I think that's, that's what, that's what I don't want.
Mary? Thank you, Jay. But, and I'm just going to say this, when people have issues, like nobody stepped forward with the public house to tell me, from the owner to the general manager, that anybody was treated poorly by, or unfairly by the planning board. I'm just saying, and that's the way we get information, is by contact.
I agree, I believe that. You know, I didn't get a project for eight weeks. Eight weeks, I was ready to open.
Yeah, but Jay, that's-
That was my fault, I understand.
No, and that's another story. I mean-
I know that, I understand that.
Okay, we've had enough discussion on the matters-
Last quarter, so I did, that was what I was complaining about.
The matter's been settled, the vote's been taken.
I don't think the project should have took six years.
No, excuse me, excuse me. Could you please use the mic?
Okay, thanks. All right. I really appreciate everything Mr. Patel has done in town. I don't see anybody else, I mean, I don't see anybody else in town coming to step up and do projects like Jay has. And you've done an amazing job with Holiday Inn Express and the Panera. I mean, it's like I'm getting all the responses, it's like off the charts, but people are so psyched up for all these things.
Could you-
I mean, I see things happening in Wellesley-
Now, could you introduce yourself?
I mean, it's Paul Roseblum, Five Old Brook Circle. No, I see, my wife and I are up in Wellesley a lot, Framingham, Natick. I see all these towns growing here. We got to start growing here, you know? I'm not saying we're going to be Wellesley or Natick here, but we could do a lot more little projects here. We have to grow here, okay? That's what we have to do.
No one's disagreeing with that, no one's disagreeing with that, and no one's disagreeing with Mr. Patel's project. Mr. Patel has always worked with the town. He really has. The public house works with the town. The planning board, though, needs to dot their i's and cross their t's. But did the project take a while? Yes.
It should have taken that long.
Excuse me, do you know how long the high school project took, and the elementary school project took? These things take time.
Oh, I know, I understand, and I appreciate everything you guys have done.
And the town, the town is growing. We have a lot more businesses.
And I think Mike Chisholm is an excellent choice. I mean, he needs some new talent.
Well, apparently-
You made a good, good choice.
You know, so we'll see how it all works out.
I just, I just want to address it, because I lost my train of thought. And I do, I'm happy that the Holiday Inn Express is in. I support it, I support the lights. I've already said I think the sign is disproportionately small, and, you know, that's my own opinion. But some, some of the delay, and we're not going to read all of it, but I also think that you ran into some construction issues with the sand and the fill and the soil. And the Board of Selectmen, it was a different board, some of us were here, were very supportive, very, I know, but I want to address your colleague. Extremely supportive on the tith that was worked out. And then when Mr. Patel came back to us and said that you ran into some excavation-construction delay, I'm not saying it was all that, but that was a portion of it, that really did not have anything to do with the town. I think it was unanimous vote that we extended the tax incentive financing for another year, and asked them, as much as you need to extend it, we're here. So the town holds, yes, I know you do, but this conception that the Board of Selectmen is not pro-business and not business-friendly, I do take issue with. We have, well, he said that there was a delay for eight years, and we-
No.
Not you, Mr. Patel, but you're, well, I think he did say that. It shouldn't have taken eight years to go-
He did say eight years.
What, well, how many years did you say?
Eight weeks.
He said six. One.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said eight years before. But there was, there were delays that were not associated with the, with the town.
He did say years.
I think you said years by mistake, and I know when-
And you came up to the mic.
When you, not you, Jay. No, I think you did say, I think you said years.
I think you said, I, I don't think I remember that one. I think it's eight weeks delay on my water.
On your water.
Yeah, but that was, that was not entirely a town fault, so, but let's not sit here all night and argue. It's been settled. Well, wait a minute, Priscilla, we may have other citizens.
We do. Oh, that's true, I'm sorry.
You never know. Any other citizen? You better be.
I was talked of enough times, I apologize.
Well-
I, I didn't understand that-
Public hearing in the public meeting.
So that was my fault, I, I apologize.
Yeah, no, most, most people don't. That's why we explain it to them, but it's usually when they show up at a meeting thinking they can talk.
Are you Eric?
So now you know.
Okay, I just want to talk to you after.
You know, now you know. Okay, Priscilla?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? And I'm sure the storm's over.
There's always one that's going to second that motion.
You weren't quick enough. You weren't quick enough.